I don't necessarily have a lot to do, but that's what it would be pretty easy.
I get a call from House Code 27. I'm going to talk about that some more. The issue there is different. I'm up with it. It's how they're doing it. I'm getting back in line. You know, it goes back to not having.
I agree.
Nothing good needs to go.
Good morning. I welcome you and call to order the November 27, 2018, meeting of the Celine County Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks? Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where the citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and on items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman Mantle, Salona. When will this jail study information be available? Does anybody, have you got a deadline? Are we going to drag it out till 2020? Why isn't it coming to a conclusion? You've been working on it for six months. I know it's a rhetorical question, Mr. Chairman, but...
This process does take a while, and we're dealing closely with the person from Denver that's helping us with it. And we do have another meeting on January the 24th, I think it is, for the subcommittee of the jail process. And we'll hopefully be able to come out of that meeting and have more of a definitive deadline or where we want to go. There is a light at the end of the tunnel on this process.
It's getting dim.
Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Morning.
Morning, commissioners. I'm Terry Berger, 5024 West Shipton Road. Staff, I'm here today representing, I think, all the people in my neighborhood, which is West Shipton Road. And for those of you that aren't familiar, Shipton Road begins on Ohio and for about a half a mile is hard-surfaced. Then at 81 Highway, it becomes gravel, and it runs all the way to Headville Road. Back when Dana Morris was your county administrator, those roads were named so they could be easily identified by emergency personnel and people know where to go. You're probably wondering where I'm going with this. Well, it also was designated as one of the main arterial roads in the county because all fire, our fire protection comes out of Elm Creek, all the way up to the section that I live in. And so that road has to be maintained and kept open at all times because it also is a school bus route. Now, as I stand before you right now, that road, were it not for an individual with a John Deere tractor and a blade, would be shut. Now, yesterday morning, when I got to Thompson Road, which is where the hard surface begins, which from the Halsted Road West is about a half a mile, a quarter of a mile, well, a long quarter of a mile. So from Thompson Road and Shipton to Headville Road, it's all gravel. Your maintenance crew is located at the Headville Fire Station. Now, I have some knowledge of how important this is because I had an uncle who kept the maintainer at his farm and graded the roads until he retired back in the '60s and '70s. And so I'm here today because, as I started to tell you, that road would be still snowed shut this morning had it not been for a farmer with a tractor plowing a path so we could get through it. So yesterday, on my way to town, a motor grader was turning around at Thompson Road, and I followed him all the way until he almost jackknifed on the top of the bridge going over I-70 because he hit the edge of the bridge. I followed him doing, and he had it in what I would call, from my days on a tractor, road gear, doing in excess of 20 mile an hour down Halsted Road with his blade down, and not a damn thing there to blade because that road is maintained by the state of Kansas. They plow that from the interstate north to where Halsted and Shipton meet.
That's Thompson Road you're saying is maintained by the state?
No, that's Halsted.
Halsted.
At exit 149.
Right, right.
Now, I'm upset because, you see, that we went through a considerable amount of rainfall in the month of October, and I checked with, and our road was not getting maintained. So I called your person who's in charge of roads, and I said, "Do you keep track of when those roads are maintained?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "When was it last maintained?" Now, this was on November the 19th. He looked at his calendar, and he said, "Oh, well, it was October the 30th." I said, "Doesn't that seem like a long time to you for a road that's went through nine inches of rain to not be maintained?" And he agreed with me, and that day, that road was maintained. Now, the problem with that was several days had gone by since the rain had quit, and as you know, a road gets packed, and running a blade over it does absolutely no good whatsoever when it's that hard. It should have been maintained a few days after the rain had quit, when that road dirt could be moved and the potholes filled. So what I'm saying to you is, I'm asking you, as commissioners, to ask your people who are in charge of that to be more accountable because that's a main arterial road, and a school bus driver lives just an eighth of a mile from me and has to get out on that road every day. But she could not have run her route this morning had it not been for the path that had been plowed by the farm tractor with the blade, and that's pitiful, in my opinion, for the kind of service. Now, just so you understand, I'm not a city guy that moved to the country that expects city services. The place that I own and live on is fifth generation. So we've been out there for a while, and we tolerate the fact that we don't expect you to pave our roads or, but, well, to give you another issue, I think that the schooling that you do with these maintenance drivers, these guys that drive the maintainer, needs to be better done. Because I had to call in when the first heavy rains hit because he had graded the road in such a fashion that the water coming down the hill, instead of going in the ditch and under my driveway in the whistle that's there, it ran in front of my driveway and cut a ditch that deep in one rain. Now, I called and asked about that, and as soon as it dried up, they came out and they fixed that. In the meantime, I took a shovel and I fixed it so the water goes in the ditch, as it should. So I guess you've heard what I've said. I just am asking you to ask your department head to ask for some accountability because I know that back in the day, those graders had snowplows on them and were ready to go when the forecast was the kind of weather we had Sunday. And we don't wait till Monday morning at 8:00 to start plowing the roads. It can't happen. Thank you, and I am going to leave now because I hacked my watch and I only got an hour because the parking was full out there, so thank you.
All right. I'm going to instruct staff that I want to call for a review of our policies of road maintenance in terms of time spent on an arterial road versus a secondary road and so on. And let's review some of those policies because I think October was an extraordinary month, no question about that, but we need to get to the bottom of some of these calls and concerns that are coming from the constituents. I mean, I even got a call at 7:00 this morning regarding roads, and they've been coming hot and heavy since the rain, and people such as Mr. Berger do understand that we can't get to every road the first day it rains. But, you know, the complaints are coming too long and too often and too frequent for us to ignore it, and I think we need to do just as Mr. Berger suggested, and that is call for a review of this policy and get our road and bridge people in here, both Darren and Mr. Cooley, and let's have a sit-down and talk about these things. So thank you, Mr. Berger. Is anyone else who wishes to speak on the public forum today? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for November 6, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of November 6, 2018 as presented.
Second that.
Been moved and seconded, we approve of county commission minutes for November 6, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Approval of county commission minutes for November 13, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of November 13, 2018 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the commission minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number four.
Approval of county commission minutes for November 15, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of November 15, 2018 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we accept the commission minutes for November 15, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to item number five.
RFA 207-18, applicant tracking system contract with Marilyn Lemore, human resources director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. I am bringing a request for you today, just not really a short synopsis of what's going on, but we have utilized Kansas HRE Partners that was hosted by Sedgwick County for our online employment applications for over 16 years, and that has been free of charge. The system is becoming obsolete, so Sedgwick County is going with another source solely for them, and therefore, they're giving us advance notice that they're going to do away with Kansas HRE Partners in February 2020. There are many applicant tracking systems on the market, and we've contacted a small sample of those just to do a brief price comparison. Contacted ADP, ISMS, Clear Company, NeoGov, CIC, and Civic Plus HR. With all those to choose from, there are several cities and counties that currently use Civic Plus HR for their applicant tracking, onboarding, and performance management. Civic Plus is a cloud-based and focused towards government, and it is our desire just to look at the applicant tracking piece of it to replace Kansas HRE Partners. There are currently 191 public sector employers that are utilizing the HRE Partners applicant tracking, and they will all be impacted by the elimination of this partnership. So that will potentially bring some other individual or other counties and cities looking at other sources and possibly Civic Plus to offer that service. Civic Plus HR has provided a very lucrative discount for public sectors that will sign with them before the end of 2018. It's actually a 50% discount on the first-year annual fee and their implementation fee. Signing after the first of the year, but within the first three months of 2019 would result in a 25% discount and then no further discounts beyond that. They do have an annual technology increase of 5% after year three. Civic Plus is a very good proven product that other cities and counties are currently using that service, and there are some cities and counties that are using them for their website hosting as well. Civic Plus HR is aware of the elimination of Kansas HRE Partners, therefore, they are creating this very lucrative local government deal of the 50% off for government agencies that want to move over to them. Based on this discounted pricing for local Kansas governments, the proposal would be $4,812 for the first year of the fee plus the implementation fees. Based on this discounted pricing for local Kansas governments, we are asking for awarding a contract by non-competitive negotiation pursuant to our procurement purchasing and contracts policy 40.32, the exception for governmental contracts. Should Celine County at some point decide to move away from their product, they would give us our past records for the required retention period. The alternatives for action would be to approve the awarding the contract to Civic Plus HR and take advantage of the reduced governmental pricing, deny the contract, and look at other options, and delay consideration for further information. Staff recommendation is to improve the contract for the applicant tracking solution to take advantage of the discounted governmental pricing. This allows for plenty of time for the implementation period for a smooth transition before HRE Partners is eliminated. The product does provide all the same features as Kansas HRE Partners, along with many other features. The applicant side has been sampled and provides a very user-friendly application. Since this was an unknown upcoming expense, no dollars have been budgeted for this, but in order to take advantage of that better pricing, the 2018 HR budget appears that it could cover about 50% or a little more of the cost of it, which would be the $4,812, with a request with the Computer Software Accounting Fund in the ARC finance to cover the balance for the first year. We would then need to request additional dollars in the HR budget for the next year to cover this expense moving forward.
Okay. I have a kind of a two-part question. Number one, why can't we develop our own program through our ID department, to IT department to accommodate something like this? And number two would be, what is the advantage for us to go through with this? What does this accomplish for us?
There are, you could ask IT to build this, but it will take time. This is already a developed product. I know that Sedgwick County, they created this. It took several years to create it and put it into place, and so it's not something that can happen just immediately. I do have concerns about making sure that we are, it can be a legally defensible product, that we comply with the ADA, comply with the EEOC. There are lots of features that I would like a form to have in place, being able to provide data to the hiring department without providing too much data because we are going to be collecting demographic information, and you don't want that going to the department head. So there's protections that you want to have in place, and I would hate to see us go back to a very paper-intensive process like we did about 16 years ago. We do process about 800 applications per year. Right now, we're sitting on seven vacancies, and so we use this product daily. It's not something that is used just every once in a while. There are other options out there, but we have found that this is the most affordable option for what we need.
Further questions from staff?
Marilyn, if I get this right, you want to be on board with this in 2019 then? It would start?
It will take approximately, I would say, a good three months at least just to get it set up, that implementation. And so if we were able to do this agreement by the end of the year, we could, of course, take advantage of the deep discount. But that would give us plenty of time to get training done, to get it all in place before Kansas HRE Partners goes away. So I would hope within six months, we could stop using Kansas HRE Partners and go solely with this if it's approved.
So there'll be a period, if this is approved, there'll be a period in there where you'll be touching both products?
Right.
And how many of the county staff is hands-on with this?
Primarily two of us in our office. We do have a third person that is trained in it, but she primarily does payroll and benefits, but she can dabble in it when needed. So we are the ones that are getting it out there. We're doing the communication with each of the applicants. We do have the mechanism in Kansas HRE Partners, and it would be the same with Civic Plus as to where you can steer or push applicants, our applications, to the hiring department head, and just the ones that need to go to them, not all of them.
So in order to get this moving, though, we would pay an upfront cost in 2018? And I assume that no money from 2018 can be carried over to 2019 in this budget processor, or would be all spent at that point?
It will have to be spent. If it's in the 2018 budget, it has to be spent in 2018.
All right. Are there further questions of the staff or comments? Is there any public comment regarding this manner?
One question.
Sure.
Just to clear it up and mind. You mentioned how it would be funded in 18. What is the cost in 2019 then?
That would be...
Is that 75% or...
It would be $5,625 moving forward, and then they do have a 5% technology increase that they do after year three, so there'll be a slight increase that happens.
And we would need to find that money in 2019 out of some budget line because that budget's been set, correct?
Yes, but we probably can use the same money she's using in 2018. We have some extra software money in the finance subdepartment just for such things as this, you know, that might be some kind of technology or software that we need, so...
And I might clarify, the amount that would be paid in 2018 is going to pay for 2019. So during the 2020 budget prep process, that's where we would request the additional dollars. So we aren't necessarily paying this amount for 2018 services, but it gets us on board, and that will pay for our fees for 2019.
So the $4,812 would pay for the remainder of 2018 and 2019?
Correct. That'd get us started.
And then during 2019, we would go through a budget process of which you would say, "Hey, I need this, this is the amount of money I need for this product."
Yes, yes, for 2020. Yes.
All right. Hearing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the contract with Civic Plus HR for the applicant tracking system.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve RFA 20207-18 for applicant tracking system contract. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six.
Resolution 18-2261, Health Department Advisory Council member appointments with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Jason.
So in follow-up to our study session last week, after we reviewed the expression of interest forms for the vacant position in the Health Department Advisory Council, I have resolution 18-2261 in front of you, resolution appointing members to Celine County Health Department Advisory Council. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas, have determined that it is in the best interest of the county to have an advisory council for the Celine County Health Department. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas, that the following persons are appointed to the Celine County Health Department Advisory Council from August 1, 2018 to July 31, 2021. Shane Hudson for first term appointment, adopted this 27th day of November 2018 by the Board of County Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas.
Okay. I will say that I've thoroughly looked over Mr. Hudson's resume and have even talked to a couple of people. He sounds like he's a very solid choice for this position.
Yes, sir.
And I'm particularly excited at the fact that we've got someone with a mental health background, that type of thing. This falls over into our jail situation where we need help there, too.
Absolutely.
So we're getting some advice from that area, so I'm excited about that type of an appointment. So I appreciate you coming through with someone such as this. So further comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution 18-2261, appointing Shane Hudson to the Health Department Advisory Council.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded, we approve resolution 18-2261, Health Department Advisory Council member appointment for Mr. Shane Hudson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Is there any other business or announcements to come before the commission today? Hearing none, I will say that we will be going into an administrator update session and following a short break, and everyone is invited. So I will accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We're adjourned.